You all ready?
Yes.
No, we lost Steve.
Who's Steve?
Oh.
He was here a second ago.
There we go.
Hopefully he'll come back. Wouldn't scare him away.
I'll step out for a second.
There he is. That's okay.
Dr. Larry.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for Monday, October 21st, 2013. Mrs. Kennedy, would you kindly call the roll?
Mr. Lennon.
Present.
Mr. Cole.
Here.
Ms. Sweeney.
Present.
Mayor Holliday.
Present.
Mr. DeCanta.
Here.
Mr. Coffee.
Here.
Mr. Keown.
Here.
Thank you. Could we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The mission statement of the Newburyport Public Schools. The Newburyport Public Schools prepare students to live successfully and meaningfully in the community and the world. We teach them to collaborate, to think creatively and critically, and to communicate effectively. Our schools are safe and inclusive settings, academically rigorous, with high standards for comprehensive curricula, and high expectations for student and staff behavior, growth, and performance. We actively promote the health and wellness of all our students. We engage the entire community in the educational process.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to remind committee members to turn off their phones at this point. Mr. Keown, do we have a consent agenda this evening?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $345,772.72 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $36,191.90 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Is that it, Mr. Keown?
Yes, it's it.
Thank you. We received the minutes of our last school committee meeting late this afternoon, and I'm assuming that some of us didn't get a chance to look at them, so I'm going to put off the voting of the minutes of our last meeting until our next meeting, if that's all right with everyone. Thank you. We've now reached our first, our public comment section of our school committee meeting. This is the time when members of the audience may address the school committee. We ask you to come up, state your name and address. Try to keep your comments to about two minutes or less. Is there anyone that would like to address this committee at this point for public comment? Yes. Dr. Orlando.
Ralph Orlando, 4 William Hall Drive. I'll be brief tonight. I want to call everyone's attention to the fact that before the last meeting I missed, and my apologies, a topic came up about public comment. It was tabled. I really would like to see that openly discussed again. Public comment, people who've sat on this chair, some of whom are in the audience tonight, can tell you that there are a lot of good things came from what people said in these chairs at periods of public comment. The reason why you need to have two, we need to have an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting to call your attention to some of the things we think are critical, but more importantly, once the agenda is presented, we may have something to say about what's presented. And I've never seen when we had two, anybody abuse those two sessions. What I really want to talk about tonight is another common theme that I bring to usually around this time of year, and that's the budget. We're at the end of October, almost into November. Haven't seen a word discussed about the budget. Normally, I'm always talking about next year's budget. I have some real concerns about this year's budget. I'll toss them out to you again. It won't be the first time I presented it to you. As I've sat here this year and looked at what sort of additions that have been unbudgeted placed in this year's budget, I have some concerns. We have a bus. We have a STEM coordinator. We have two out-of-district tuitions. I have just come back from a parent alliance meeting where the 12- to 14 educational assistance for the SPED program was cut out of last year's budget. They're now putting them back in, and perhaps rightfully so. I'm not an expert in that area. We've added three, apparently, at the high school. This is a series of unbudgeted costs, and then if I throw on, and those are real, those are legitimate. To me, that adds up to about $400,000 or $500,000. I hear also about this Chartwell's thing being a very nebulous loss. And so I have some real concerns about how we're going to handle the budget deficit for this year before we ever move on to talk about next year's budget. And I would hope if you share my sentiments on doing those calculations that I've done on just the information presented here at school committee meetings, that you have an obligation to tell the community how we're going to make that up, or if we found money somewhere to make that money up, where it came from. Because I know of no stabilization fund in the school district that's six figures in numbers.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Hearing none, we're going to move on and hear from Julia Bradley, our Newburyport High School Student Representative. Hi, Julia.
So, the football team lost to Masco last Friday. By a lot.
That's a great way to open.
Also on Friday was the annual NHS blood drive, and then that Saturday was PSATs. And SATs are going to be on November 2nd. Tonight, at Amesbury Sports Park, the field hockey team is playing the Play For Cure game. I hope they're winning right now, because they're playing right now. The German exchange students are enjoying their trip so far, as far as I know. Tomorrow, they're going to Salem along with their host students. The 31st is Halloween, Senior Dress-Up Day. And the NHS Theater is preparing the play Frankenstein for the beginning of November. And if there aren't any questions, I'd like to excuse myself.
One more call.
Just a suggestion, and that would be, they had a Salem in October.
Do I know? Julia, do you know how many students, how many German exchange students we have? I don't mean to put you on the spot, or...
Not exactly. I would say maybe around 10 to 15.
And there are host families that they're staying with, which is great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next agenda item is about MCAS accountability and presentation. And if you don't know what PARC is now, you'll know what PARC is in a few moments. So I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Picaro. Is that going on?
Before, I don't mean to, before we get started, is there, because I know that we, I received something at 10:05, and I did not have time to download it, and it was related to how this has changed. Is there a way to walk me through that? Because I, it's really short notice, and I, you know.
There's, there were a couple sections that were added, Steve, in the actions.
Okay.
And it was, I, the, I'll bring this over, so you can look at mine.
Okay, I was, I had emailed...
So we didn't get copies?
I had emailed back to see if the hard copies could be brought here, because I just, it just makes it very difficult to, uh...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I didn't get that email, or I would have brought them.
I sent it right back to Kathy, but it was probably 20 minutes after she had sent it.
Okay. I think she was sending out. So, this got added to the science section, the MOLs, actions, and then the middle school math actions. Do you want to take a look at them?
Yeah, I mean, I really would like to see them. I'll draw them down while you get started.
Do you need that? No, well, when he starts. I'm sorry, this is just taking a long time to boot up.
At least we can see.
Meanwhile, I'd like to invite Emily Russen and Liz Kinsley to come to the table so that they can join us in the conversation. Maybe we can just pull a couple chairs that are here over. That way, they're going to, they're going to chime in a little bit when we talk about the actions that are being put forward.
Unfortunately, we don't have wireless, so...
But look at how much brighter the lamp is in the projector.
I did notice that.
It's a new projector.
Can you see it?
Keep up the slideshow, Susan. On the top.
Got it.
The way up on the toolbar.
There we go. There you go. And then, from the beginning.
There we go.
Okay. I'm going to just start off and do an introduction for everyone. And one of the things that's changing is how we will be looking at our accountability data. And we are going to, as you know, right now, we are leveled, levels one through five, with the highest districts performing at a level one, and the lowest performing at a level five. In general, a district is classified by their lowest-performing school. In Newburyport, we are a level two. For 2013, they're going to be looking at school percentiles. School percentile is between 1 and 99, and it's reported for schools that have at least four years of data. It's an indication of the school's overall performance, and it's compared to other schools that serve the same or similar grades, but they're not always perfect matches. Something new that is coming to Newburyport and to all of the cities and towns in the Commonwealth is something called the Progress and Performance Index. And this is going to be a new way to rate where schools are performing. And it is, it combines information over a number of years into one single number, and it quantifies our data based on that one single number. And it looks at narrowing our proficiency gaps, our growth in our graduation and dropout rates. So this is really going to be a change as to how we are looking at, at our accountability data. We will receive an annual PPI that's based on improvement over a two-year period, and we are graded on a score of zero to 100. For a group to be considered making progress, or to be narrowing its proficiency gap, we need to be scoring at least a 75 or higher. This was formally calculated as our annual yearly progress. And accountability report for 2013, you can take a look at each of our schools, and you can look at where all of our students were and where we had high needs. And high needs is a new term that's being used, and that includes low-income students, our students with disabilities, and our English language learners all grouped together. So they're, they're giving you some new data. So you can take a look and see where we have met the target, which is where the asterisks are, and where we have not met the target, where there is no asterisk. And I should have prefaced this by saying, there is a lot, we'll be presenting a lot of data tonight. We'll be answering questions at the end, but certainly feel free to stop any one of us as we're going along. Overall, when you look at our median student growth percentile, you can see that we go up in the grades in terms of our median percentile, and according to students rising in the grades. So we hit 97 in the 10th grade, but at the 4th grade, we're at 60th percentile, and that's for proficient or higher. So that, I'm sure that one slide, that really jumped out at me when I took a look at that. Quite the difference between where our 4th grade performance is and where our 10th grade was performing. And then, this just lists for you who was tested and what was tested, in terms of, of this particular grade levels. And what was new in 2013 was 50% of our questions were based on the new Common Core State standards. So that was something new that was on this particular administration.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
How much of our, how much of our instruction, Angela, would you say is based on the Common Core?
Well, I think that we're transitioning it. So, last year, I would say probably about 40 to 50%,
Okay.
because this was the first time they were including any of the questions. We knew that that was coming, but we weren't fully integrated at that point. And, you know, we talked about last, last time we were here, is that full integration will take a very long time. So people, I think our teacher's curriculum was fairly well-aligned, but really understanding the depth and the breadth of those standards, and how to fully implement them, is, is going to take time before we're doing that really well.
So the state realizes that many school districts are not teaching 50% of the Common Core?
Well, I think...
So is this a test for usability?
I think the state's expectation is that everybody is, last year was, teaching. If you remember, do you remember the chart from a couple of years ago when we talked about how we were going to be introducing the Common Core?
Yes.
And how that was transitioning through the MCAS testing over multiple years? This was the first year that some of it was included. So I think the expectation from the state, as far as the implementation plan that they laid out, would be that everybody was about 50% of the way there last year. But as we're learning, as we delve deeper into the standards, you know, you can be aligned, but to really understand the sophistication and be able to teach to the sophistication and have the students learning at that level isn't going to happen as soon as you start to implement.
I think we're going to be tweaking for quite a long time.
Yeah, okay. I was just trying to get a ballpark of how close we were.
Okay. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about some of the data, and we're going to look at English language arts first. And as Susan was showing, that the, the direction of our growth, as far as the slide just a minute ago had on it, you're going to see this in this chart, in these charts. And you'll see that we, we accelerate as we move through the grades. That's not a trend that's new to the district. And it's not a trend that's unusual across the state. We, of course, are always working towards improving that. But this represents grades three, four, and five in the four categories on the MCAS test, our advanced numbers, and these are percentage of students, in advanced, in proficient, needs improvement, and warning. And this represents the same statistics for grades six, seven, eight, and 10. And as you can see, you know, our chart shifted significantly when you start to look at grade six and on. Majority of our students have hit the target and are in the advanced and proficient ranges. This, we broke out a little differently than we have in the past. We thought we'd look at what our progress was over a three-year period. So just as you look at this graph, just to help you, the blue bars represent proficient, and the first bar to, if you're facing the screen to your left, is 2010. The second bar is last, is this year's data, the 2013. And the gold represents advanced. So we're looking here from grade three right through grade 10. And as you can see, the gold increases as we go up in the grades. On some years, we've got a little bit of a trade-off, where maybe our advanced students have increased a little bit and the proficient has gone down. So, you know, that indicates that we're moving students in the right direction, but we'd like to see them both rising at the same time. And this is our cohort graphic that we've shown you for several years now, where you can, the colors actually allow you to track a cohort of students over several years. And, and you can also look at some of the history within the district. One of the things that we've been looking at for the last several years is what happens in grade four. We see a little bit of a dip when our students get to grade four. And I do want to remind you, that's the first year that writing is introduced on the MCAS exam. So we've been taking a close look at that and really trying to improve our students' writing skills, knowing that that's the big difference between grades three and grade four. We, you know, we're looking at different groups of children, so comparing last year to this year, thank you, Steve, comparing last year to this year isn't always that relevant, although, you know, it does tell us a little bit of information. So we saw a bit of a dip again this year from grade three to grade four, but from there on up in the grades, we've seen improvement, as you can see.
Excuse me, Angela?
Yes.
I've pretty much been asking about grade four since I got on the committee, every time we see this. And I was wondering if you could just speak, is it really just the writing, you think, that's still in it? Do you have any other thoughts on, I mean, it's a historical thing where every time a kid goes to grade four, he drops, going back to 2006? And then they always come back up? Is it as simple as the writing?
Well, I don't think any of it is ever quite that simple. I think that's the big change. That's what we know is different about the test from grade three to grade four.
Has that been, has it been different since 2006?
It has. That's what the, it shifts in that year. And so I think that that's one of the things that we have to look at. We've taken a really close look at grade four curriculum. We've worked hard on reading strategies at grade four. Of course, by grade four, too, students are developing more independence than perhaps they've had in grade three. That's another transition that happens at grade four. There's a lot of variables that, that are included in what we look at during this time of transition, but, and every year, the, the data tells us something a little bit different. Writing is the one consistency that we see each year. So we've put particular emphasis on that. Emily, you might want to speak to that, too. Any insight there that you might want to add about that transition from grade three to grade four?
I agree with your comments, and also just, sometimes it's hard to target what's different when we haven't, you know, we need consistency to see what, what changed. And I know that there has been turnover there in administration and so forth, so that may be part of it, but I, I've only started really focusing on our district's adolescent literacy. So that's part of my actions, is to figure out some, you know, I think we have to take a hard look at it and, and figure out where we're going to go from here.
Emily, would you like to talk about some of the, oh, I'm sorry, save you another question?
Can I ask you to follow up a little bit on how turnover in administration affects it? Or what you would consider would be impacts, how that happens? Because we've had a lot of turnover, and I think it's important that if people feel it's affecting achievement, it's all the more reason that we work harder to recruit and retain our people.
I'm happy to speak to that. I think that one of the things that happens when you have new administrators come in is that they, everyone has their areas of interest that they sometimes want schools to focus on, and I'm not sure that every administrator is always focused on data-driven decision-making. And I think that if you were to look at, and I have not done this, but certainly something that I can look at, look at where the focus has been in your school improvement plans over the last several years, I bet you would find some variability there. And so it's a, it's a, it again comes back to that consistency and that focus. You need to work on things for more than one year in order to have continued success, and you need to keep, you know, a laser-like focus on them if you want to see improvement there. And I'm not sure that that has necessarily been where we, where we have, have focused in every area in terms of our achievement, so...
So the, so the teacher needs to have that laser-like focus?
Absolutely. It needs to work from, you know, central office down to the building administration down to the classroom.
So what I guess what I'm getting at is that building administrator also has to know how that teacher's doing with that focus and support them as they go through the growth.
Yes.
And that when you're changing that, it makes it very difficult to sustain, as you say, a consistent model.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Emily, you want to talk a little bit about the actions?
Sure. The next two slides outline some of the actions that the principals reported that they're taking this year at their schools. And what you'll see is a common focus across several of the schools on, on three areas. One is students' work and open response. So the open response question, as you know, is where the students have to write, they have to create a written piece that responds to the comprehension question, that typically is where we struggle the most in our, in our results. Otherwise, we tend to score at or above state average on our multiple-choice questions. So, so giving students more opportunities to respond in writing is an emphasis that you'll see at almost all the schools. In addition, you'll see a trend of more explicit instruction on what the standards refer to as informational text, or in the nonfiction genre category, in reading and writing, and being consistent across the grades with that sort of instruction. As you look at the data, you'll recall that two years ago, the district, I believe, was labeled level three. Is that right? And now we're level two. And it's, as you look at the data, you'll see that last year's grade-three scores were quite a bump up to 74%, and then leveled back down this year. So that was disappointing to, to everybody in the school, that, that we saw that drop. But in general, as we look across all the years, we, you know, we see somewhat of a flat line. So we're not, you know, we're, we think we can do better than that. And we've taken a few concentrated measures in our younger grades to address this. So one of the things that, that you'll see under the Bresnahan School that I mentioned at our last meeting was the implementation of what we're calling MCU's in all grade-two and three classrooms. Those are model curriculum units that are available to us free from the state, and we piloted some of those units last year, and the teachers responded that they really raised their level of expectations of what students that age could do. They were really surprised that students at grade two and three could read such a quantity of texts and complex, complexity of texts at that level, and be discussing them and, and writing about them the way they did. So other teachers voluntarily took on units for this year, and so we have really revamped curriculum in grades two and three this year to see if that makes a difference. We think it will, because we already have seen increase in student vocabulary use and reading fluency. The phonics skills being taught earlier was noted in the standards, and that is something that we're concentrating as early as kindergarten, in terms of even when we teach the letters and how we teach them and sounds, because by the time we get to a test in third grade, reading fluency can't be the issue. The, the questions are just too tough. So a student has to be able to fluently read the text to be able to put their attention towards the comprehension of that.
Emily, can you, can you explain a little bit more to me what a unit is?
Sure. It's about a three-to- Sure. It's about a three to six week course of study. They, second and third grades just finished a unit on what is the purpose of informational text and why do we use it? And then, their reading and writing was all about those features. So, they, in second grade, they were learning a lot about frogs and, and animals and science texts in their literacy time.
So, they're based more on a strategy?
They have overlapping standards. So, they might have three reading standards, two writing standards, a few speaking and listening standards in them.
But they're focused?
They're focused. And then, by the end of that three to six weeks, there's a curriculum-embedded performance assessment where the students now have to show that they can do this work independently or with support, depending on how the standard's written for them to perform. So, so you get an immediate sense as to how well the students have mastered that. And so, we're moving forward into the next unit that teachers will be teaching is realistic fiction. So, they'll be spending the next several weeks on realistic fiction books. They're not all genre studies. Some are, they usually have an essential, they all have essential questions that guide it. You know, so, so students are always referring back and saying, you know, does this answer our question that's guiding this, this study? So, it probably goes back to your comment last time about relevance. You know, it, it becomes relevant to the students. There's purpose behind it.
Thank you. Yes, very much so. Is it self-sustaining? I mean, are the reading materials included in this box? Is it a box?
No, it's not a box.
I've got this vision of boxes arriving in France jumping out.
We're thinking outside the box.
So, do we have the corresponding reading materials?
We have a literacy partnership grant from the state and we've used that grant to fund books for these units.
Okay, thank you.
They, and so, I spoke about our foundational skills that we're trying to make sure that students are very comfortable with their foundational reading and writing skills. And you'll see increased discussion around reading to prepare for responding to text in writing. We're not expecting first graders to respond more than one or two sentences in, you know, to a text, but they can say a lot in their discussion. And so, that sets the foundation for longer composition later. And, and in general, you'll see that we're also working across the schools at helping students feel comfortable with test-taking strategies and having the stamina to, to make it through. It's, it's, it can be a pretty challenging assessment. And we'll note later that the assessment will be changing and, you know, it'll continue to be very challenging. At the middle school level, those same three trends of open response, informational text, explicit writing instruction occur. Something that Beth Rossi has said was very successful for them last year was their interim assessments use. And so, the teachers designed check-in points where they checked the assessments so many weeks and at that point, review that data and determine what their next instructional strategies are. So, they had great success with that and they're going to continue that work. And in high school, again, those same trends continue and they're going to be focusing also on detailed text-based analysis, which last time I was here, we looked at one of the Park samples that showed that all the way down to seventh grade. So, those are some of the actions that different schools are focusing on this year.
Okay. We're going to, you know, as we've provided you in the past, some comparisons with comparative communities, geographic communities, and the communities we aspire to. But you'll see that the communities that we have up for comparative communities are different than those that the school committee had identified several years ago. Because now, the state is identifying comparative communities for us. And so, we chose as many of those that crossed over because we had some that were the same. But many of the ones that were on our list are no longer considered comparable communities for Newburyport. So, we, we took the demographics that were the closest to ours out of the ten that the state selects. The state selects ten and they call them our DART communities. So, DART, that's the acronym they use to identify it. So, if you look on, on the Department of Education website, you can look those up. You can see those ten communities that we're compared to.
We have been talking about this for a while because I don't think we have looked at the comparative communities and our aspiration communities, as you said, in, in the last several years. So, now, the state has determined who, who our comparative communities are. What, do you know what that's based on?
Yes.
I don't mean to.
Right, no, it's based on student population.
You mean numbers?
Numbers.
Just number of, okay.
Number, student population, size of your schools. The amount, your poverty level, what the poverty level is in the schools based on free and reduced lunch count. So, that they count that as your low-income population, your ELL population, and your special education population.
Okay. Thank you so much.
So, oh, can we just go back for one second, Susan, to that? So, you know, I just wanted to have a peek at where we're falling in some of those communities. You can see our trend upward through the grades. When you look at the, when you look at our data for grade four, grade eight, and grade ten, to see even where we fall in our comparisons. And even when you look at grade ten and you start to look at the fact that we're number two out of four in our aspiration communities, but it's a matter of two percent difference. The percentage changes considerably, as you can see that. I just thought I'd draw that to your attention, so, and we're, of course, in the red. We're going to look at math the same way. So, math, we're, this is looking at grades three, four, and five and the number of students that are in each of our ranking categories on the MCAS, the performance categories here. And you will see similar trends to ELA, although not quite as great. Go on to grades six through ten. Again, you'll see that we have a significant increase in advanced and proficient students, but we still have more in the area of mathematics that we need to move to the left. Our numbers of students that are in needs improvement and in warning are greater than they are in ELA.
A general observation that I would make is that I think that traditionally, school districts have placed more emphasis on ELA, on the LA focus, and are now just beginning to realize that we need to place equal emphasis on math instruction at, at the lower levels as well. And clearly, this, this data shows that.
And again, this is the three-year comparison for proficient and advanced scores 2010 compared to 2013.
Would be something I would like to look at is I'd like to put those two slides of ELA versus math and side by side and see what it looks like.
That, that would be a good idea. That would be a nice thing. One of the things that I wanted to point out here is grade seven. You know, I think we had improving data and some of it was steady. Some of it showed, you know, beautiful improvement. But if you saw grade seven this year, we had a little bit of a dip. And that's something we're looking closely at. We had a lot of, we had students on either end of the continuum in this grade seven class when we look at this cohort. We had quite a few students in our advanced category. As you can see, that increased significantly. But we had many more students that actually were in the warning category than we have had in a very long time at grade seven. So, we had larger numbers at both ends of the spectrum that we're taking a close look at. And here is the cohort data for math. As you can see, we've got a couple of years in grade three and four that are rather flat. But then, you know, we really start to see some significant improvements in the area of math from grade five on. I'm very pleased to see the progress that we're making with grade five students. So, continuing to do some work. There's been some very good work done at the Mullen School around alignment to the Common Core and taking all of the resources that they have and actually putting those together electronically for all the teachers to access. So, any resources that are well-aligned to the work that they are doing are now available to teachers through a share drive where they can go and get things.
I think one of the things that we want to look at in the math area is the inconsistency that we see. Over time, we really need to take a look at that because there's, there's a lot of variability there. And one of the things that I'm interested in seeing if we can try to stabilize the growth across all grades.
Well, and if you, you know, the, the growth can be large, it's, you know, big leaps at certain points and almost level at others. So, we're moving that backwards into our lower grades, which is a good thing. You know, we used to see the larger leaps just in our upper grades, but we're seeing it as far back as fifth grade now, which is good news. Liz, would you like to speak to some of the actions here?
Sure. So, we took a look at, with the principals and the teacher leaders with a lot of the, at a lot of these MCAS data. And in the same way that ELA kind of honed it down to a few important action items, so did math. And so, what we looked at was focus on basic skills. So, what kinds of interventions all students need to be much more proficient in their basic skills, which help them to do more deep thought and better problem, have better problem-solving skills. So, we also looked at, looking at data in many different ways, but especially to inform instruction. So, looking at how data can be used to influence how we teach and what strategies we're using that help kids to understand and be able to access these basic skills as well as more in-depth skills as well. We looked at how technology influences what we do and how we can use technology to improve our instruction or to, to, as a, as a ancillary way of looking at ways for students to practice some of their facts as well as some of their open response questions. And also, using some of the technology that's in the schools so that parents can help support students at home.
Please. Study Island, can students access that from home as well?
Absolutely. Yeah, they can. And then, we looked really hard at problems with perseverance. So, with kids that have a problem, that might be a two-step problem or, or a multi-step problem and just not really following through and persevering. And that we saw across the, many of the grade levels. And as Angela's going to speak to the Park test and the changes in the MCAS, and we're going, we feel really strongly as a math group that that's going to be something that all of our kids are going to have to really have a lot of practice at is making sure that they're persevering, that they're solving the problems, and that they're really looking at different strategies to, to go deep into the problems and report their, their findings. We're, we're looking at certain strengths across the grade levels as well. So, we see that geometry is a strength for most of our students, even in grade three, but certainly as they get through and go into grade eight. We see in the upper grades, in grade six, seven, and eight, we see a strength in proportions and proportional reasoning. And we also see a strength in statistics and finding, working with rational numbers. So, positive and negative numbers. And so, it's, it's not, it's not all, all tough. It's really, I think, we're looking hard at instructional strategies and how we can improve those and how we can support students who are at both ends of the continuum. And just as a note that's not on here, but we looked hard at kids that were in the, in the high needs improvement. So, these were students that only needed to answer one or two more questions correctly to be into the proficient range. And we found that there were a lot of those kids. And so, I've talked to both the principals and to the teachers about ways of looking at some of these students and seeing if they, if we can give them maybe a few more test-taking strategies, as Emily said, or just ways of just answering a couple of more questions, which would really bump those, those percentages up a lot. So, and really, one question or two questions is, is, is really nothing when you're looking at it. And we did have quite a few kids that were in that band of high needs improvement. And so, like to do what we can to kind of support those kids, to bump them up.
Is that the perseverance issue that you see?
It really is. Yes, it really is. And our kids did pretty well on the open response questions as they got older. So, I think that their writing skills are helping them to answer those questions more thoroughly. And we noticed that the younger kids, the grades three and four kids, did not do as well on those open response or short answers. And I think that's partly the perseverance and partly that they're developing better writing skills as they get older.
I think, just to add to what Liz is saying, we're really recognizing the importance of language in the world of math. And, you know, the importance of having students talk about their problem solving, to explain their thinking, to use many of the same strategies that they're using in reading to guide their math practices while making sure vocabulary is consistent. All of, just good language, good, good literacy strategies are really helping our students in the area of math, too.
Can I ask another question about that?
Sure.
What are we doing for writing in math? Because there are open response questions and you talk about, you know, students' thinking skills and their discussion skills. But what are we doing to help students transition from that oral thinking into writing and then being able to produce a communicative piece that answers the question?
It's a, it's an excellent, excellent question. And the programs or the resources that we use all the way from K to eight, they're all standards-based materials, based on the old standards, but they're all project-based. So, basically, what the kids are doing is they're working on a problem and then they have to communicate their knowledge. And it's not like the old, like when I was in school, which was the, you know, find the algorithm, use the algorithm, and just answer fifty problems that are the same. It's very different. So, now, the kids are all, they, they're using the same skills, but their strategies can change based on what the, what the task is. And so, maybe Emily and I won't use the same strategy to answer the problem. We'll still get the same answer, but then, we can really kind of debate which strategy makes more sense or which one's more efficient. And so, as kids get older, they're saying, okay, well, my strategy, I'm now I'm seeing how Emily solved that problem. I know I get the right answer with mine, but I see that hers is a lot more efficient. So, that's how we're teaching kids to use math, but it's very language-based. And so, that's why we see that students that have either a language disability or students that are ELL are very, have a very difficult time because it's so rich in, in vocabulary and in language.
And some of our math teachers use math journals with students.
Well, I was going to ask, are we doing math journals?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I was always going to ask, are we doing math journals so that, you know, after you have that kind of a discussion, can they open up a math journal and say, now, write that out so that there's practice there? I, I...
So I'm glad to see we're using math journals because I think they're very valuable.
And this is our comparison data for math.
Asking questions. Are we assigned the, our aspiration communities by the state as well as our comparative?
No, the geographic and the aspiration are still what, with the, with the school committee had decided.
And we haven't updated that in several years.
That's right. That's right. So that might be something you want to take a look at at some point to see if that's still where you feel. Once again, you'll see the, you know, the size of the percentage lowers between the schools as we get higher in the grades. Let's take a look at science. As you know, we test for science in grades five, eight. And you'll see here we have 10 and then we have grade nine biology. And the reason we list both of those is because the majority of our students take the ninth grade biology test. But any student who fails has the opportunity to retake the science exam in the 10th grade. And at that point, they can take biology, chemistry, physics, or technology. So they can choose their test then. They all take the biology exam in ninth grade. So that's why you see just a little bit of a variation in that data because that may include a few more students who retook the test in 10th grade. So between the 10th, the 10th grade data and the ninth grade data is what I'm referring to. That's okay. Yeah, I just, you know, we're moving more students into our proficient range. We still have far too many in the area of needs improvement for us to be pleased with the data. Here, we once again took that data for grade five, grade eight, and grade 10 and broke out proficient and advanced over the three-year period. I do want to remind you in grade five that the students are tested on curriculum, on the standards from grade three through five and in grade eight from grade six through eight. And grade 10 is the ninth grade data combined with a few students at the 10th grade level. Those were out of order. No, I think, you know, can we go back to that one because we never did look at, oh, no, we did.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. All right. And this is the cohort data here for science. It's not as extensive, of course. And it's really, when you're looking from grade eight to grade nine, you're looking at apples and oranges. It's not really comparable. It's not really comparable. The, you know, the test in grade five and the test in grade eight is comprised of all domains of science. And it's tested over a multi-year period. And the test in grade nine is biology, and the students have studied biology the year leading up to that test. So it, it's really, it's, it's not a fair comparison to do the cohort look here.
Why, why is that then? I mean, wouldn't it be more effective to say drop in, you know, an exam perhaps in seventh grade?
I would love to see more testing in science than, than what's currently happening. And I don't know what will happen with the test schedule when new standards for science are adopted, whether the test scheduling will stay the same. One of the things that we talked about this year though, when I met with the high school department chair around looking at the MCAS data, was he was actually pulling data from the various domains. They were disaggregating the data from the eighth grade test to look at, say, life science, to see how well-prepared the kids were in life science to lead into biology by the time they get to high school. So we're really starting to break out some of that data from the various domains. But it would be nice, I agree, Steve, if we had more, more data. We're building better assessments in-house. We're doing a better job with the middle school teachers worked over the summer. Their summer curriculum project was on building interim, midterm, and final assessments that are well-aligned to the standards being taught. So I think they're looking at that. We're trying to gather as, as much other data as we can. So we have something to look at. Want to speak to some of the actions, Liz?
Sure. So in, in science, we looked also at the data. There's not as much data as you were just pointing out, Steve, but there's, there is enough data that we can start to see where we find gaps. And so we find that there are strengths in certain areas and that there are areas that need improvement or that need work. As Angela just said, there's a lot of work being done around developing some in-house measures of, of student growth and achievement. And that's difficult at the, well, it's difficult really K to eight because all the students are really responsible for all the content, so all the strands, which is, it's, it's tough because the, the kids are, are younger and they don't retain the, the material as, as well. And they don't have as much experience with it as they have with ELA and math. But we see that at the Mullen School, we saw strengths in earth and space science standards. We saw some actions that include in continuing to improve instructional experience, experiences for students. So making sure that students are getting inquiry-based lessons that include labs, that include hands-on work, that include connections to both the Common Core and ELA as well as in math. Continue to integrate thus the Common Core and also to continue some professional development. I've been working a lot with the teachers in, in terms of getting to be just more comfortable and more familiar with some of the STEM subjects and making sure that they're considering, including those as they, as they look throughout their curriculums. The Mullen, all, there's, there is one student, one teacher K to five that's attending a STEM workshop. The first one is tomorrow. And there's a series of workshops that are going to help them to integrate the new science standards into their classroom practices. They've also done a little bit of data analysis, but I did, I did the analysis really for them. And then we talked about areas that they needed to work on in terms of gaps in their, in their content. And then at the middle school, they've got a really great program at the middle school. The middle school teachers are, are very strong in science. They only teach the science content, so they've, they've worked really hard to look at their items, their MCAS items. They've done a thorough analysis. They're looking at, again, their interims and final tests and trying to see if they can make sure that the, the work that they're doing prepares the students for the test, but also addresses the new standards as well. They're doing a lot of spiraling and they're, they're continuing to develop their goals. They're teaching SMART goals around some of these best practices in science instruction. And of course, we have a STEM class at the, in the eighth grade. And so we find that the technology and engineering strands, parts of the curriculum standards are well addressed because we've got that really excellent program at the middle school. So we see our, our scores are, are good, but we also feel like the MCAS might not be a perfect measure of student achievement in science because it is a lot, there, there are a lot of multiple choice questions and, you know, three open response questions, but it doesn't really match our instructional strategies as well. And similar, in a similar way in math, but, but certainly in science, the way we teach is not really the way we test in a way, so.
And at the high school, the high school has spent considerable time going through the MCAS results and looking at what they need to change. One of the things that I thought was really interesting that they did this year is they pulled every question from the test that the students did not score as well as they would have liked them to. And they're looking at each of those questions and identifying where they address that concept or that skill in the curriculum, and they're embedding more of it. They took each of the individual questions and then they figured out, where does this fit? And where do we need to focus on that? So I thought that was kind of an interesting approach to looking at the actual questions and seeing how they're embedded in the current curriculum and instruction. And then you can see the other things that they are focusing on as well. And as you see, science scores everywhere are not as high as the areas of ELA and math, even by just the way, you know, looking at the percentages and what those percentages are. And not only, you want to go back?
Well, I just, I'm, I'm looking at something though. If I'm looking at eighth grade science, you know, we're at the top of that scale with a 62.
A 62 percent, right.
So, so is it fair to say that lots of communities fell down in science this year? Or I don't...
It's not only this year. I think science is an area, right. It's one of the reasons they're looking at the standards. It's one of the, you know, our kids are, our students are across the state are not performing at the level anybody would like to see them. And part of it is exactly what Liz spoke to. Instructional methods are not necessarily the way that, a good match for the way the test is given, the current test. So if you're using an inquiry-based science instruction and taking a multiple choice test, it's...
No, no, no. I also, no, I also want to note though, I think that grade eight is an exceptional cohort because if you see their scores are right up there in math and English Language Arts as well. So, you know, I think it's more of an exceptional cohort.
Yeah, that is a good observation.
Do we anticipate that the PARC assessment will be a better assessment of science than what the MCAS has been?
Well, we don't know yet because right now PARC is not designed for science. It's only designed for ELA. So, but there will be an assessment that accompanies the new standards for science. Massachusetts is moving slowly on the adoption and there's recently been some conversation that they may not join the new generation science standards. I think they'll adopt a lot of it, but this is an instance where Massachusetts feels like some of the Massachusetts science standards, particularly in the area of engineering, are more rigorous than what the next generation science standards are. And they're not going to compromise on those areas. And so, you know, it was anticipated that they would be adopted by this September and they've held off. And now there's conversation about taking a look at that document again.
But it's a state choice is what you're saying?
It's a state choice. It is. This is, you know, there were a lot of states involved in the next generation science standards, but it is not connected to any kind of federal monies or anything the way that the Common Core works.
Now we're going to move on to PARC?
We'll move on to PARC. And this is the assessment that is slated to replace MCAS or possibly replace MCAS. PARC stands for Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers. And there are 20 states that are involved in adoption of the PARC assessment. And it just happens to be chaired by our commissioner, Chester. So, and what this is all about is really developing high-quality assessments for both English Language Arts and Maths, grades three through 11. They are computer-based tests and they are linked to what students need to know to really be prepared for college and career. And they are going to be piloted this year in 2014, in the spring. There's two components. There's a performance-based assessment, which I love about this test, which means we're actually assessing kids along the way. We're not waiting till the very end. There's, part of the assessment is done while the learning is happening. And that's performance-based assessment and it's shortened as PBA. And then there's the end-of-the-year assessment, the E O Y.
And you guys remember, last time we were here, both Emily and I brought an example of what that PARC assessment was going to look, look like. So we've, we've already started looking at them and using them really in our classrooms.
And if you noticed on the high school goals for both ELA and math, the high school departments had set a goal to get more, to participate in professional development around the PARC assessment and learn more about PARC. So the field tests are going to happen this spring in both ELA and May, I mean, in math, at grades, grades three through 11. And they will be both performance-based and end-of-the-year. They can be administered this time around on a computer or on paper. And the state was flexible about that because some school districts just do not have the technology capacity to provide the test on, to use computers to take the test. There's two classrooms per grade and subject in selected grades that will participate at the high school level, four more classrooms per grade or slash subject. And the primary purpose for the field test are really to test the test. That's what it's about. We're not going to receive any data on how well our students perform. There'll be no results reported because this is really designed to test the test. So we're going to look at the quality of the items, the pilot, how the test administration goes, how those procedures work, getting, and getting, giving the schools and districts an opportunity to actually experience the administration of this test ahead of time. But the field test materials will be treated the same way as MCAS. Everything will be as secure as an MCAS test will be. Students in grades three through eight may participate in either the, the PBA or the E O, E O Y or both. It just depends on how you're selected. And the state selected what each district would do, okay? So there's nearly 360 districts involved in it. Close to 1,300 schools, roughly 87,000 students that will be participating in the field test. Nearly 800 schools will administer a computer-based test and close to 500 schools will administer the paper test. Here in Newburyport, we have chosen the computer-based test.
Yes, we want to definitely see.
We want to see, do we have the capacity to do it?
When you say capacity, you mean infrastructure?
Yeah. Infrastructure and, and the hardware necessary to move the students through a test in a reasonable period of time.
Well, that's the other, that was where my question was going on. You know, are, are, is our technology curriculum in concert with PARC so that our, our students would feel comfortable in the, in the third grade?
That's a really good question.
Taking a test online. So have we looked at that?
We have. And we've moved back our key boarding curriculum to grade two instead of grade three because really at, on the grade three test, they really need to have, they don't need a lot of keyboarding skills, but they need really good skills using a mouse. There's a lot of click and drag on the test at that level.
Well, I remember Liz talked about start over buttons, so...
So this is the field test that will be happening in Newburyport. We've been selected to field test the ELA test in grades five, seven, eight, and nine. We will be using two classes at each of those grade levels to test with. The test will be taken online. And as you can see, grade seven won the prize. They're getting tested in both components of the test where grades five, eight, and nine will only be tested... nine will only be tested in one. And, and next to it, you'll see the amount of sessions that will be involved to take this test.
And they still have to take the MCAS?
Well, that's, that's optional. So, this is, the state is giving you an opportunity to exempt the students who are taking the PARC field test from the MCAS test, if you choose. As you can see, there's enough time for the students to do both. They've got some overlap windows, but it's a lot of testing for our students. However, if we do decide that we're not going to take the MCAS, we're still in discussion about this, we have no data on those students, because there's no reporting that's going to come from PARC. So, we're still in discussion about the pros and cons of this, the amount of time, how well we're going to be able to manage it, and we don't have to make that decision just yet about that component of it. But the state has given you the option to opt out of, just for those students who are participating in the field test. So, that means we'll just have a break in data for those students who are involved in those classes if we choose not to have them take the MCAS. Next year, it's going to be an interesting year, because next year, the state is allowing districts to choose whether they want, if you remember on the first timeline, everybody should have been taking PARC by next year. But because they feel like they really won't have enough data from the field test just yet, they're giving districts the option, in the year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, that's school, school year next year, you can choose whether you want to administer PARC or whether you'd like to administer MCAS. And then the following year, by two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, they'll have enough information on PARC to say, do we have a really good exam here? If they do feel that they do, then the state will make the decision that everybody will move to PARC or not, if they decide that it is not what they had hoped that it would be.
So, if you move to PARC next year, will you get data or not?
We would.
We would, next year?
We would get data.
Just this first year, you want?
It's just the field test, because next year would be real administration.
The concern is the May timeframe?
Yes.
With the end-of-the-year assessments and, you know, that's an awful lot of testing. And then you have your end-of-the-year exams.
Exactly.
For the high school, yeah.
The high school, they didn't do any of the performance-based assessment at the high school, because, for the high school testing years, because they were very concerned about, uh, for tenth grade, anybody who's involved in tenth grade testing, because they were afraid of taking time away, instructional time away from, from the students who have a high-stake MCAS test that they have to pass that year. So, they only did end-of-the-year, so it would coincide, you know? So, they were cognizant of that, but, I mean, you know, when you think about the amount of testing that our seventh-grade students will be doing this year, that's where we have to really put some time and consideration into that, because our seventh-grade students already take the long composition component of the ELA test in grade seven for the MCAS. And now they're being tested in both a performance-based PARC as well as the end-of-the-year test. They were chosen to do both. So, grade seven is really the year that it would be a tremendous amount of testing and we're going to have to look closely at that.
Especially for your students.
Yeah. It is, it's a lot. So, we've inundated you with a lot of information, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have to the best of our ability. You know, there might be some questions we'd have to get the answers to for you, but we do our best.
Mr. Keon?
Okay. So, in two thousand fourteen, we're going to choose between the PARC and the MCAS, correct?
Correct.
Who's going to make that choice?
It's a district decision.
It, based on, I mean, you're the expert in the room on the PARC right now, I guess, you and your team. What's your feeling on it? I mean, you've, have you already alluded to the fact that we're actually going to lose data, valuable data that we currently rely on?
We'll only lose data if we choose not to have our students who are participating in the field test this year take the MCAS.
No, 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 no. And the whole way the test is designed, PARC versus MCAS?
Well, we're going to have a new test, so you're not going to, you know, again, it would be like apples and oranges, but we won't lose data. We won't lose data, we start to collect different data.
Okay. So, is it like the rest of the country trying to catch up to the MCAS? Or is it...
Well, I think the PARC is a different kind of exam. And if you remember, like Liz said, that, you know, we shared some questions with you. I think it's a new generation kind of test, and I think our students have more opportunity to show what they know on the type of test that it is. It gives them, it's a, there's a variety of questions, there's more opportunity to explain their thinking, there's more opportunity to use illustrations in the way that they do the work, on a platform that they're more comfortable with, one that they're more proficient in, and their comfort level lies in. So, I'm anxious to see how the field test goes, because their released questions that they've shared with us around PARC have been an improvement, in my opinion. And so, I think that we're headed for a better test in the end.
So, in the end, the PARC, we will still come away with the same type of data that helps us assess ourselves as a district?
Absolutely.
And compare ourselves to our, to our aspirational communities, communities and our geographic communities. We'll still be able to provide that kind of...
We will be. It will be a little difficult next year, depending on, with the communities that we're comparing ourselves to, whether they choose PARC or they choose MCAS, because their data may be different than ours for that, that in-between year. So, we might, it might get a little bumpy during the transition, but...
And there won't be any cohort data, really, because we won't be able to compare last year to this year for those same students. So, that cohort data will, will go away for several years until we've got more than one. Do you understand? So, we can't really compare...
Oh, no, yeah, of course. You've got to start somewhere.
Yeah, so I think that's going to be the place where maybe we would say we're losing, you know, we're losing data, but...
Yeah, I think, I think one of the exciting things to me about the, the PARC is it really, it's both formative assessment and summative assessment, so that you'll have opportunities to see how we're doing and adjust, correct course, so that by the time the end-of-year assessment shows up, the student should be in pretty good shape. And to me, that's very exciting, because that's the way students learn.
The other interesting thing is that while there are twenty states that are involved with PARC, there are an equal number that are involved with another assessment, it's called Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium, S VAC for short, because you know that we have to give an acronym to everything in education.
Of course.
And they are looking at doing things a little bit differently. They are looking at doing much more performance-based assessments as part of, of them switching over and to a new assessment system. But both of these groups are working simultaneously and they are comparing information. So, I suspect that we're going to see changes to both groups based on perhaps the others' work as well. So, I mean, it's, it really is quite the national movement.
And, and the, the goal being that it'll be a better indicator as, to student success after graduation. So, the purpose behind the standards is to prepare for college and career readiness. And our tests have, we, you know, in, across the nation, and even in our state, we'll see students who pass MCAS in high school but need a remedial class in academic reading in college. And so, this is aimed at being a better indicator as to how students really are prepared for sort of college and careers.
That's right.
Have you seen anything?
Well, the mayor had her hand up first, so I'll go to her and then I'll come back to you, Mr. Decanter.
I was curious. I mean, I know that at our state colleges and community colleges, we keep track of developmental courses. Do we know that data for our students?
We know some of that data for our students, yes.
Some? Just some?
We know it from, like, our, our local community colleges.
Okay. And state colleges, state universities, do we get that information too?
I don't know that, I don't, I would have to check on that.
It would be really helpful to have that, I would think, you know, especially since we, you know, know that we have a, you know, a good percentage of our students who are going into the state system and be able to determine, you know, how many students are, especially, you know, now before we introduce, you know, the, the...
That's, that's a good idea.
...being able to, I mean, if this is the whole point, is college readiness. And I know there's been conversations about, particularly in science, that our students haven't been ready. And I know both my kids have to take developmental courses in college, which was a big disappointment.
Yeah, because you have to pay for it.
Yeah.
Mr. Decanter, did you have a question?
I do. In the, the PARC assessment and the development of it, it's fairly clear to me how we would be testing critical thinking in terms of the skill sets that people are, are looking for in colleges and, and careers. It's clear to me how we would be testing communication. The other two Cs, though, are not so clear. Do we see evidence of how we are testing for students' ability to collaborate? And do we see any evidence about creative thinking? And how are we measuring that creative thinking?
I think that's an excellent question, and I think it's, I, I don't think you get any collaborative data. You know, I think that, that's difficult to do, but I think probably they'll be able to, we'll be able to look at, at creative ways of solving problems, and I think we might, we might get some creative, you know, data, but I think you're, you're absolutely right.
That's one of my, that's been...
It's an absolutely excellent question.
One of the things that I've been looking for anywhere is what kind of data, we say we want to help our, our, our students be more creative thinkers. How do we measure that? And whether it's involved in the PARC or not, it's still a question that I have. How do we measure their ability to be creative thinkers?
One of the things that I, I can just say about that is a lot of our local assessments are developing rubrics that address those kinds of skills in our local assessments, because that's, as you know, it's a priority of ours, and, and as teachers are developing content and skill rubrics, that's a piece of that.
Would we be tracking that information year by year and within cohorts?
Well, I think we will be.
The way we do in the MCAS?
With, you know, when we get to the point where we've got our district-determined measures, and, you know, those are going to be assessments that we can buy, that are manufactured out there, or that we can build in district to address our specific curriculum. And then I think we will be able to track that kind of data.
So, I can keep dreaming?
You can keep dreaming, man.
All right.
Any other questions?
Just a comment.
Sure.
I, you know, I sort of can't get past the power of something you said very, very early on in, in talking about what was going on in grade two and grade three, about the teachers being surprised that the kids were able to manage so much content, so much, they were able to read so much. And, you know, it, we know that expectations often, you know, set limits. They can inspire, but they set limits. And I, and I think that what we've experienced here are, are a set of expectations that set a bar that was very low. And I, I really appreciate, you know, that look at, at what is happening, because it is one of the things, I think, that needs to change. But, but that was very powerful and I didn't want to leave that. And, and, you know, if, once we're finished here, Cheryl, I would like to, I would like to ask that we open up to the folks who are here. We have another section of public comment, so...
I, I was anticipating that.
But thank you very much. There's, it's still a lot to look through and...
It's a lot to digest. Mr. Paul?
Yeah. I have a few areas I just want to check in on. First one is related to science, and I like the fact that we are trying to, if you will, calibrate assessments, building better assessments in-house. I was curious, and largely because we've got very strong lab facilities and pretty strong science teachers there that have worked as a unit for a while now. We haven't really had much change in that group of people, and they, they do a good job. Where does, where does place-based ed fit in that now, moving forward? That's my first question.
Do you want to speak to that? Because I know you have the history.
Steve, are you referring to the middle school or the high school?
I guess I'm referring to seventh grade in particular, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Place-based education is still a big part of the seventh-grade curriculum. There, the whole grade level participates in a lot of multidisciplinary experiences in the field. As a matter of fact, we just had a report last week at our leadership meeting. Lisa Furlong had been out on one of the trips, and she said that she was so impressed by the vocabulary that was being developed by the teacher and by the students in the field about an invasive anthropod that they had found in the marsh. And to hear her come back and talk about what she had learned about this, you know, small species and the impact it was having on our environment and what the kids were able to do as a result of it was very powerful. I think she was a little bit surprised at the level of learning that was happening there. So, that's still a big part of the seventh-grade curriculum. I think one of the things that we're looking closely at right now, Steve, is the retention of that experience as it applies to them moving on to the next grade. So, that's something we're really trying to gather some data on, because there's no doubt that the experience is really wonderful. But how much of that are the students then carrying with them to continue that spiraling of learning?
My, my second question refers back to the MCAS growth report, and in particular, the PPI noted as sixty for grade four. What's our thinking about adding what we need to, to maybe encourage a better growth number?
Yeah, that was something that was a disappointment all the way across the board and, and honestly, a bit of a surprise this year. So, we're taking a close look, and Emily, jump in at, at any point.
Can I just, have you taken a look at prior, if you will, cohorts to see how they've done between four and five? And has there been a rebound in the PPI? I know it hasn't been around that long.
It hasn't been a long, right. We used to look at AYP around this.
Yeah, right.
So, we've just really started looking at the PPI, and, and it's a different set of, you know, it's calibrated differently than what AYP was. So, again, we're kind of starting with some trends, because it hasn't been around very long. Last year, we saw great progress in our grade-three scores, if you recall, and we were really excited, because we thought, okay, here we go, we've turned the corner. And really, what happened this year is we fell back to where we were the year before. I think Emily was trying to explain that. So, it wasn't a huge regression, but we lost our growth projection that, that we had started. Some of it could be a cohort, Steve. You know, sometimes we have to look at cohorts of students and it impacts scores and statistics that we get. And we just don't have enough PPI data yet to see if that's really what was happening. I do know that everybody's taking it very seriously. I know, you know, the, the teachers at the Brezner hand were disappointed, the principal was disappointed, we were all disappointed, but at the same time, there's not any one strong indicator that says this is what went wrong. This is what happened. Emily, is there anything you want to add to that?
Could I, could I just add one thing? One, one thing I did check, you told me a long time ago that it's kind of a statewide fourth-grade phenomenon, and, and I actually went to the D E S C website and confirmed that. It, it's pretty clear that fourth grade generally drops, and then it gets picked up across the state. I, I actually have it right here. All the grades go up, except fourth grade. There's a big drop-off in fourth grade enhancement.
And there was a drop even in third grade statewide this year. I think that probably is because of the new standards being...
We knew that when we were making the changes in our classroom instruction at the elementary level, that it was a larger shift as far as the informational text went, to the way that we used to teach reading and writing, had much more emphasis on fictional text. And, and I think we're doing a good job transitioning into much more informational text in, in the, and in our strategies on how you approach instruction around that. in, and in our strategies on how you approach instruction around that. But, you know, there'll be a little bit of time, I think, before we really see the benefits of that on paper. The good news on the other side of it was that, you know, all of our other schools met the target of PPI. So that was considerable growth at the Mullen particularly, that we had met those targets.
And I think that speaks also to when you said we haven't yet seen change. We are seeing change on other indicators of reading progress at our younger grades that we anticipate will pay off over time. So we use different screenings at the beginning, the middle, and end of year for K through three. And that includes DIBELS Next and our benchmark assessment for text levels. And each year, we're seeing those scores increase in the percentage of students at grade level and above.
Mr. Paul, I think you read one lingering.
Yeah, I just said one, one last one. It's more of a, well, I guess it's kind of a, just an observation, I guess, from seeing kids come through Newburyport, high school thing, seeing them come through our schools. Someone mentioned earlier about the importance of, I guess, related to math, writing about how you're thinking about a problem or talking about it.
That was me.
That was you?
That was me.
That was you, well, very. And, and so we're doing more of that?
So is this a question you're directing at Cheryl?
No, 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 no.
I just want to keep, I need a scorecard to keep the players.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, thanks. But I think someone's talking about how it's important to, I guess, expose students to learning how to solve problems in that way.
Sure.
Okay, so are we, is that something, is that something we're trying to do more? I, I guess what I'm getting at is, you're also going to run across the exceptional student who, you know, is, in their own nondescript way, is going to just want to solve it.
That's right.
And I'm just wondering if there's a way to, again, not hold that person back, but maybe find ways for that person actually, if you will, teach the class as to how they're learning, and maybe take turns and collaborate that way.
And sometimes you can say, you know what, you, you've solved that. Can you think of another way of solving it? Can you think of another way of, of making it? Can you find a, a more efficient way of doing it? Or so, yeah, of course, that's.
Because, I mean, we do have, not so much here at Newburyport because it's a small school and everybody kind of knows everybody and their strengths. But, you know, there's a context where you have some just nondescript math students who, it's nothing for them to get eight hundreds across the board in their ACTs. And, and I just think if we have, if we're, you know, if we have students that are blessed with that type of ability, I think it's important to, again, give them the opportunity to collaborate as much as we can, and so that others can learn, gain confidence, and likewise for them as well. So, just wanted to add that.
Steve, if I can just respond to that too. If you remember when we first brought Dr. Chen into the district, we bought document cameras for all of our teachers of math. And that's one of the reasons we did, so that students could bring their work right up under a document camera. It could be projected, and they could talk out loud to the rest of the class about their thinking and the process that they went through to solve that. And that's a regular practice now in all of our classrooms, to use those methods.
Excellent, good. And at what grades roughly is that centered on?
We start, we start that at grade three.
Okay, great, all right. Thank you.
I'm sorry, but I have two more. How do you measure the success of the actions that you've presented to us? Because every year you present remedy actions for our, for our scores each year. And I don't think we've ever had any kind of a, a, a report or, and I don't know how you would do that, but how are you going to measure if these actions you've proposed at all grade levels are indeed doing what you want them to do? And I don't know if you've done an analysis of last year's actions, or, or could, could you think about that?
Yeah, I think we could definitely think about it further. We, I, at the elementary levels in the past, we've done end of year data research.
That's what I would, that's what I would expect. I would expect that we would get a report that you would work in conjunction with the leadership team in the, in the building to be able to respond to each of the, each of the action items.
And could we get a report out of that? Because we haven't.
You're right. Well, and, and I think, you know, they're well thought out, they're, they're, they're very accurate. And I just don't want to belittle those plans. I, I think they're the key. So if you could just, I don't know, measure success or give us a, a thought back, then the only other thing that I want to mention, and I mentioned it last year, and this is all great stuff, but it's, it's systematic. Tell me what happens in our district to a child who receives a warning. What do we do for that, for that individual child? Do we have a protocol? Do we bring that child to the RTI team? Do we, what, what, what do we do? I, I love the thought that you said, Liz, because I've mentioned that before. How close are our needs improvement students to, to proficient, okay? And, and I, I think, you know, I've asked for that data every year. Tell me how close our children are, and they're close, a lot of them. So I understand you're working on that. What are we doing for those children who are in the warning or needs improvement category? Each individual child, are we looking at their profile?
We do.
You can get back to me, but.
Well, I can tell you what we have, you know, the kinds of things that we have in place. Because if we have a student who is in the morning category of NCAS, it's generally not the only place that that student might be struggling. And so.
Or it's an anomaly and.
Right, exactly. Occasionally, that happens. And then we take a look at that data, and we say, was the child sick? What was, what was going on on that data?
Who does that, Angela? Does a team get together and discuss?
Teams do, they do. They get together and they talk about the data. But I think, you know, on the other hand, we do have an RTI process.
Right.
And any student who's struggling to learn or at risk for whatever reason is brought forward to the RTI team. And then we.
Those aren't functioning fully at every level yet.
Well, I think that there are structures in place.
Okay.
At every level for a teacher to bring forward a concern about a struggling learner.
So would it be fair to say that all the students that have received a warning go to some kind of a team for conversation?
I think it depends on what the data analysis tells us about where that child is. Do you know what I mean? Because every, every situation is different. And probably the majority of those students get recommended for some kind of a review. But it really depends on, you know, it's more than just a number. It's really looking through the data, telling us where that student struggled, what other things are going on with that student. There's, there's so much more to it.
All I want to make sure is that, that we're getting a, a true total profile.
That we don't just say, oh, look, there's how many failed.
I don't want them to always be in the warning category all the way through school, and then we haven't addressed that on an individual basis. So that, that's my point.
I think we're working hard at that.
But is it a, a pattern that if someone's in morning in ELA, then they're typically across the board? Or is it just, it's, it's all over the place?
It's all over the place. Yeah, I mean, occasionally, you'll see a student who has struggled right across the board.
And I assume that there is an intensive program for that student.
That's right.
Can we, at some point, learn about what that looks like in numbers of students that we're talking about?
And, and the only other thing I wanted to say for future, oh, yeah.
Can I just say one more thing about that?
Of course.
Just, the problem with looking at the NCAS data altogether is that it comes out in September on last year's kids. So that's, that's something that doesn't, I mean, it certainly is valuable, especially if we're looking at those kids in that bottom. But there are a bunch of other ways for us to identify earlier on in the year whether the kids are struggling or not. So in ELA, there are, there are several ways. And it's not just limited to the students that are in grades three to, to ten or nine or whatever. So, so that's part of it, is to get a really good picture of where the kids are struggling, which kids are struggling and where, then, then we would love to report that to you, but we would be looking at other kinds of data, like interim data. We would be looking at.
Great.
Yeah, and I think that, that the, the warning data, by the time the kids are, are warning, it's, you know, the end of the year. And that's, you know, shame on us if we're waiting until that data comes through before we, you know, look at those kids, so.
But a new year's teacher would pick up that, that, you know, so it's not, I know it's at the end of the year.
Absolutely.
The, the, you know, the, the instruction for that child in the coming year, it's very important.
Exactly, exactly.
The other thing I guess from all of this that I would like to request at a future meeting is the integration of our writing curriculum into content area subjects, what we're using for our writing curriculum. Because it appears to me in looking at this, and I've looked at lots of NCAS data in my lifetime, it's the writing that's, that's, I don't want to say year after year, but it is. It, it, it just is. And so I would like to, in the future, get a presentation of, you know, what our writing program is. Is everybody using math journals? How are we integrating writing into the curriculum areas? That would help me a lot. So I, I'm going to ask for that. Anybody else have a? Oh, Audrey, I'm sorry, Ms. McCarthy.
Angela, I actually wanted to follow up a little bit on what Cheryl said. So the kids who do have the warning or. How, what is being communicated to the parents other than the letter that goes, you know, the scores that go home? Do you find the parents are able to, I mean, I know you might not know this, but are you hearing back from the schools that the parents feel that they can call up? Or are parents just saying, oh, geez, you've gotten a warning? Or do we reach out to those parents and explain what might be offered? Because, I mean, it's a significant percentage. It's, it's a small percentage, but in the life of a child, it's a big, it's a big percentage. And so do parents, are, do they feel empowered? Do they know where they can go? What do you do with a child who has such a low NCAS score?
That's a great question, Audrey. And I think I'm going to have to get back to you with the answer because I feel like each school may handle it a little differently. And I don't want to misspeak, you know, without talking to them and really find out how they are reaching out to parents and what they make available to them for consultation. I mean, I know what happened when I was in the schools, but that's a long time ago now. So I think I'd have to get back to you about that.
I mean, I suspect for a lot, it's, it's probably the same parent you're hearing from and the same parent you're not hearing from. But it would be interesting, maybe other districts are doing this too, is to have some sort of NCAS information or how you follow up and invite parents. And maybe there'll be a parent there whose kid isn't doing that bad, but they're still curious. But, because I, I just feel like sometimes we have a system that runs on the squeaky wheel. Unfortunately. And, you know, I would, I just would hate to see opportunities missed for kids because they don't have squeaky wheel parent, so.
No, I agree with that. I think that's a very good point.
This, this whole conversation gives me an opportunity to really take a look at it from, you know, the district perspective, to see how consistent our processes are in each school. So I think I, I, this is, this is a great discussion because I don't, I don't know all the details of this yet, and it would, these are great questions, so. We'll look into this and we'll get back to you.
Any further questions? We're going to move on. Thank you very much. This is a, a good look.
Public comment?
Yes.
Oh, oh, I'm just going to turn that projector on.
Well, they can comment. Still, they should be. I, I need the mobile. You're going to leave that on, though?
No.
Okay, because I can't sit here.
Right.
I, I think this has been a tremendously information-driven last whatever. And I want to thank the audience for their, their attention. I would like at this point to offer a second period of public comment. Same kind of rules apply. If anyone has a, has a public comment to make at this time, would you come join us at the table and share your thoughts with us? Yes, Mary.
Mary Foley, 15 Mont Street. I don't want to burst everybody's bubble after that with this. And let me preface it by saying, I love data. I build marketing databases. I write reports to analyze data. I like data. But as far as our schools go, I feel that we are becoming way too data-driven. Data-driven to an extreme and to a distraction. I feel that the constant testing means less actual teaching time. I think teaching to the test eliminates teachers being able to really assess their own kids and teach to how they will learn as a class. It seems backwards to me to look at tests and data to determine what and how to teach. So in my humble opinion, I think it's way too data-driven, way too many tests, and I do not see that it's benefiting our children. To Cheryl's question about kids that are struggling, I would have the same question about what is being done for kids that excel? The kids that are proficient in areas? Are they being constantly bumped up to the next level to, to excel further? And my third point is that I have voiced my concerns about the Common Core, and as you saw in my email, so I anxiously await answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Yes.
So I, I've given my name and address many times, so.
It's still Ralph Orlando.
Yes. You know, this is about my eighth or ninth presentation. I got to tell you, it's, it's kind of nice, but I'd have to add to the sentiments you've heard from both this lady and Miss Sweeney and Miss McCarthy. Sort of the same presentation every year, same graphs, same num, you know, just changed the numbers a little bit. I think we have an obligation to talk to what the solutions have resulted in. I think we have an obligation to look at the outliers, the needs improvement and warning kids. What is being done for them? What is being done for the advanced people? Just to take a look at, because that's above and beyond what we see here. And I personally, you know, I don't believe necessarily that NCAS tests what we want to test, but it's what we got to use for a statewide comparison. I've said what I'm going to say next many times before here. I'm not an educator per se. All I can tell you is when you look at what happens to those fourth graders, by the time they get to high school, they look like they've made quite a bit of transitions, and they do pretty well. But you want to take a very close look at some of the data. When you look at advanced and proficient, there are categories. I think you should break them down. Take a good look at them. And if we look at some of the data on our, our final products of students who come out of this school, and English LA, math, they're doing very well. You know, they're, they're approximating what some of the top schools in the state are with about seventy-five to seventy-seven percent advanced and proficient. When we get down to the sciences, the data speaks for itself. We don't see that in the same cohort of groups. Our advanced level is around thirty percent when, when the high-level districts are scoring somewhere, not as high as English LA and math has been suggested, but in the range of sixty to seventy-five percent, the state average being twenty-nine percent. Yeah, it's data. I think we've made some progress, but we have to look at where the careers are and what we're doing for our students. I have sent, I thank all of you, a proposal on the STEM initiative, what we do to promote families and students to have an interest in STEM-related subjects. But more importantly, what we do to have our students, by the time they get to the end level, a sense of confidence in STEM-related careers and STEM subjects, to challenge themselves if they have those talents, to go above and beyond maybe what they would normally do in high schools. That's the kind of critical information that I think you need to take a look at. And more importantly than NCAS, and I'm going to push for this at every school council meeting I'm allowed to get to, it isn't all about NCAS. It's too late if you wait for the NCAS result. It's too late if you wait for the MCAS result. What I think we as a district have to do better, and you as a school committee have to get the information on, is how are the students doing unit by unit? If you take unit one before you go to unit two, have we looked at every kid's progression, or what percentage of the kids make it to the point where they've learned what you believe is an acceptable amount of information for unit one? Because remember, proficient, and we've all said it here, is average. Okay? Are the students learning what the teacher's intending to teach them before you go on to unit two? Uh, I'm a simpleton, but that's how I look at it, and that's the kind of data, grade by grade, subject by subject, teacher by teacher, that we have to look at and critically analyze to get to the answer of this. It's not a matter of going back over question by question to see what we've missed, 'cause that's where you're teaching to the test. And even though that's the only data we have, I don't believe we should be teaching to the test. But in careers that are out there, that are in demand, we have an obligation to get our students who are advanced, proficient, and needs improvement, interested and confident in the careers and subjects that are out there. And that's the kind of information I'd like to see presented here, instead of the same old charts and pie graphs and bar graphs. Um, we need to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. We're gonna move on now to the superintendent's report.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Um, I wanted to, um, update you briefly on, I have some additional information on Chartwells, and, uh, we met with them, I met with them last week, and one of the things that they asked me about is if we could develop a policy on what happens when students forget their lunch. How do we, how do we, what are our next steps? And this was a new question to me, so I asked if they had any model policies, and I actually am in possession of, of three model policies from other districts. So I don't know if the school committee would like to take this up as a whole, bring it back to finance, um, because one of the other decisions that needs to be made is that we currently, the contract, um, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is asking for a copy of the contract, and currently it is unsigned. So I don't know if you want the finance committee to deal with that and go back with that. And this comes back to the whole idea of whether it was a three-month contract with two one-year extensions or four one-year extensions. So there are, there is further discussion and some decisions that need to be made. So I bring it to the committee, and you need to direct me as to how you'd like to proceed, both on, if you need policy to meet, to talk about that, or finance.
Could you, uh, could you read one of the, uh, or is it real lengthy, the policy about when you forget the lunch, or is?
They're, they're all over the map, but I, and I have, I only, I, I can forward them to you.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. Could, could you just say why, 'cause we haven't, I mean, I haven't heard this come up, I didn't realize it's-
Well, what I was presented with is that some students, um, will consistently forget their lunch, and they rack up quite the bill, and then they have difficulty collecting the money. So they would like to have a policy in place for what happens when that occurs. There is no charging apparently at the high school level, but this is for elementary and middle school. So it was the first I had heard of it too, I didn't know if it had come up before in any of your discussions.
No. But, but all of the students are getting fed every day?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, okay.
But that was a request from, from Teresa.
Um, I, I would say that we split the work, that the policy committee takes up, um, the lunch issue, and I think that the finance committee, since it started its work on Chartwells, and we've, um, worked on that before, I guess I would like to defer to the finance committee, uh, for, um, the Chartwells conversation. I don't know how anyone else feels about that, I-
I agree with you. Is that a motion?
Do I need to make one?
Yeah.
Um, I-
Motion to refer the Chartwells contract to, uh, finance committee and the-
Let's do it separately.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries?
To refer sample policies regarding, um-
Students who forget lunch.
Students who forget their lunch, to the policy committee to return, uh, recommendation back to the school committee at the earliest possible date.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Decanter?
Yeah, I think, from what I have a feeling on this, unless it alters the nature of the contract that we're signing with, with Chartwells, this is really a policy that, um, should be handled as a district policy, not a school committee policy. Um, and so I would look, rather than to take it to the policy committee and have us take the work at it, let the district decide what they believe is best. That's my discussion now, I would vote against the measure because of that.
Okay. You would rather the decision come from the superintendent's office?
That's right.
Okay.
Again, I'm, as I learn how you work.
I will withdraw my motion then.
Well, how does everyone else feel about that? Does that sound?
It does seem like an administrative policy.
Okay.
To me, but we could have met and I could have said it then.
Let's amend, let's amend your motion. Oh, okay.
And, and maybe, uh, maybe I'll offer the motion that, uh, the policy is a administrative policy for the school district, uh, and also if it could be brought as part of the review of Chartwells to the finance subcommittee as well.
I think that makes sense.
Second.
Happy to do so.
Was that a motion?
Yeah, that was a motion.
Second.
Can you repeat that?
Oh, no. Just write it down, Steve.
I can, no, no, I can, I didn't-
What did you say?
What did I say?
I was sitting right next to him, I couldn't tell you.
You have to remember now.
No, 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 no.
Policy is an administration policy.
Yes, that, the, this, this policy regarding, uh, what we do when students forget lunches is, should be an administrative policy, and I move that it be als-, that it be completed by administration, but then brought to the finance subcommittee for review along with the other business we're doing with Chartwells.
Poor Mrs. Kennedy. And who seconded that?
If I get this wrong, you can correct it.
Yes, it will. The mayor. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Who seconded that, the mayor?
Uh, the mayor.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to see those policies as well, though.
Anyway, yeah. Oh, yes. So bring them back here.
I'll send them out to everyone.
Oh, no, I meant when her policy, oh, gee.
Well, that too.
That too.
Um, I put January retreat on here, there's nothing, um, special about January, but I, I wanted to suggest to, or at least have some discussion regarding budget development, and when you wanted to do that, January may be too late, you may wanna do it earlier, but I thought it was important that we begin planning for it now.
I mean, my, my comment would be that, um, we shouldn't be waiting till January to be talking about the budget, so I would, I would certainly say to do that earlier. Um, you know, and there may be, you may want some space saved in a January retreat to orient new members, which is possible. So I, I mean, I think there's purpose for it, but I do think that, um, I do think that, uh, and I forgot what I thought. Just escape.
Must be that table.
That's that table. Right, Steve?
What you're saying.
Yeah.
Well, I think you were saying that we need to start perhaps sooner rather than-
Yeah, I mean, we, we, that has been, always been a subject that we've wrestled with, um, some of us on the side that we can't start those conversations soon enough, and some that feel we can begin those conversations November, December. I, I prefer them earlier, but-
As it is, um, my first budget that I will be developing, I would appreciate, um, you know, additional lead time, so.
Yeah, and I, I, I think to hearken back to something that came out in public comment, where we currently know that we're, we're operating in deficit at this point, um, we, we're gonna want to talk about that sooner, you know, and, and I would also point out that very often, we go up and down, and almost every time that I've been here, we've resolved the deficit by freezing lines, by moving things around. Um, but it is a big enough deficit that we should, we should really be talking about that, so.
So sooner than later?
Sooner rather than later.
The, the other piece that I would like to see is that after the Common Core presentation, um, at our last meeting, um, it, it really became evident that that should be driving, you know, the, um, just sort of curriculum and materials, and that should be presented to us, I think, much, much earlier than, than during the school improvement plans.
I agree.
Um, because I think that's really becomes, you know, sort of, um, part of the budget that, that should not be touched, and that other pieces have to be adjusted to go with that, but, you know, that's what we're really about in terms of moving, uh, forward and achievement, and there were a few things that were disappointing, shall we say, last year, uh, regarding, um, curriculum materials and supplies. So I'd like to see that be brought out much earlier in the process.
That's a good point. Because you, um-
I'm thrilled to hear that.
Both, both Emily and Liz alluded to the fact that you perhaps were now ready and would know what materials you might need to supplement or, um-
And to put together a three to five-year plan. This is, this is the curriculum we need, this is what we'd like to purchase this year, next year, and sort of begin to plan for that going forward. I always feel like the budget's eighty, eighty-five percent complete when we start listening to school improvement plans and it's, you know, or more, and it's, you know, these are like enormous wish lists that we can't, and to not set schools up to present those kinds of plans, because we will, you know, I mean, typically, this year should be a little bit different in terms of having a number, because it won't be tied into a transportation bond bill, and it will be, um, the House One budget should stand, you know, as it is without that added piece. That was very complicated last year in terms of the governance of the House One budget.
So maybe at our next, um, FinCom meeting, um, Mr. Cole and Superintendent Picaro, maybe we can talk about, um, you know, a budget plan, and how we get information out, both about this year's current budget, what plans we have for that, and then to continue to talk about, um, how we roll out next year's budget as well.
We can try to have a FinCom meeting next week sometime.
Yeah. We've been, um, just so you know, the FinCom has been trying to meet, um, every three weeks to, um, a month, to talk about topics such as Chartwells and budget deficit, and, um, so we'll, we'll do an update perhaps the next time we have a meeting. We haven't updated on our subcommittees, because all of them haven't met. So as of next time, we'll have subcommittee updates, um, on our agenda, and we will get back to the conversation about what we wanna do for subcommittees. So I'm requesting that that become an agenda item for our next time, so we have an open discussion about that.
All right. The next thing I wanted to bring to your attention is that I had, um, an opportunity to visit Northern Essex Community College last week, along with my parent, principal at, at Newburyport High School, and, um, it, I don't know how much you're aware, but Newburyport, in conjunction with Triton, Amesbury, and, um, Penn Tucket, we are partnering with Northern Essex. And, um, last year, all of our sophomores took the Accuplacer, and based on that, a number of students, uh, were approached and asked if they wanted to take a college readiness course, and five of them chose to do that. And, um, four of them are currently taking English Composition at Northern Essex Community College, and they're going to have an opportunity in the spring to take US History. So we are beginning to develop some partnerships, um, and around the areas of early placement testing, dual enrollment, curriculum alignment, early college. In addition to that, we also have, uh, we have a couple of our students who are participating in a program at Northern Essex, um, that involves our eighteen-to-twenty-one-year-old population of students with disabilities. And so we're really beginning to branch out, and as you know, that's an area of interest, uh, of mine. And I wanna continue to, to work with them and to identify what other strategies will help improve, uh, college readiness and high school and college alignment. And I can tell you, I was very impressed with the personnel at, at Northern Essex in terms of how much they really do wanna partner with, with the local schools, local high schools. So I think we have the beginnings of a, a great partnership there. And, um, I'm gonna continue to, uh, visit schools and see what else we can do for our students, but I wanted to-
We're, we're smiling over here.
Bring, bring you up to date on that.
That's great. Wonderful news, thank you.
Um, I also have, I wanted to bring everyone up to date on school enrollment, our October one count.
Thank you.
Particularly as we are looking to, um, to building projects, I think it's important that we look, this is the October one data, and I thought it was important that the school committee have a look at it. And we certainly can come back and visit any of the data, but I wanted you to have it, because I think there may be some questions that come up, you know, currently our system-wide total is two thousand three hundred and seventy students. You can see that we have a very big freshman class. And current grade six, for next year, we'll have another twenty students in it.
Does this also tie into the topic perhaps of school choice?
It certainly could.
I, I, I just bring that up as a question, I, okay.
Have comparisons versus last year?
I can do that, I didn't do it, but I can do that.
It does seem like we're gradually moving back up in terms of our numbers.
Yeah, that's why I'd like to see those numbers, too.
And that's why, you know, maybe we're gonna be making school choice decisions as well, so.
And I, I also think it's really important in terms of the, in the context of the building projects, and, and, you know, and it may eventually tie into class size. Um, I mean, I have not seen, and I don't know if, if the school committee has seen the demographic study that was done, that I'm assuming went with the building projects, and I don't know if that was done at the state level, or if, if that was something that we did locally.
It was in conjunction, we had to do it together, and they, you know, in terms of they gave us, um, tremendous amount of charts and placeholders that we had to put in, and then they ran, uh, formulas and then sent it back, and then we challenged some of that work, and then sent it back again, and it became all part of the total statement of interest. And I believe the members of the school committee got copies of that.
Yeah.
I, I think we did, but I-
It was, it was a while ago.
It was a long time ago, it was, yeah.
And we had to, 'cause we had to keep updating it every year for years, and then it, it, once we got accepted into the pipeline, then there was another level of the demographics data that was done.
All right. If anyone could put their hands on it, I would love to read that, because I, I would love the background for that, it would help, statement of interest.
What's the latest year it was updated, that?
It was last year, because when we, uh-
'Cause I remember seeing one a long time ago, when we were first, you know, thinking about the building plan.
Cause we got accepted into the pipeline in March of eleven.
Yeah.
So it would have been done somewhere between February and March of eleven, and that had to be done before, went before the MSBA- And that had to be done before, went before the MSBA and were accepted, the two projects into the pipeline, so...
I remember, I remember Deirdre reporting on the back and forth.
That's what I recall.
But I don't remember actually having seen the final paper.
I don't either.
Paper.
That would also contain a number of certified births by the city clerk.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah. I don't remember seeing that recently. I remember seeing it a long time ago, but not recently.
I have a notebook. I'll look and see if I have it in there.
That'd be great.
I'm gonna leave that up to the mayor. And perhaps Mr. Keel, who's also on that building committee.
And then lastly, I just wanted to remind people of our NEASC, our upcoming NEASC visit. And you have all been asked to attend. You have that schedule given to you.
And the school, as you remember, the school board will be meeting on Sunday, October 27th, from 2:15 to 3:00 with the NEASC board. So any members that can attend that meeting would be great. It's conversational.
Yes, I'll be coming back from, I'll be in New York that weekend, but I will be back for that meeting. I won't be there for the morning orientation.
Yeah. Well, that's a long, yeah. Thank you.
But save me some, save me a bagel or something.
Do they feed you?
Do we have to be there for the morning one?
No. We're just requested to be there at 2:15. If, if available. I mean, I'm not, you know. Some of us will be there.
Business casual, um...
Well, how do you want to portray your school district?
Oh, man.
Papa and tails, Bruce.
Uh, we're gonna move on. We have... Civil war with the rabbit, Bruce, with the rabbit.
Yep.
I'm gonna move us quickly on to the last item on our agenda. I realize this meeting is taking longer than we usually have taken. Yes, Mr. Menon?
It seems to me that if we don't have, we should discuss whether somebody is going or not, because if we don't have anybody going, we can adjourn the meeting, because they don't take proxy, as far as I remember.
And I, and I was gonna mention that at first, you know, my first. Every year, the Massachusetts school committees and the Massachusetts Association for School Superintendents has a joint conference. And during that conference, part of the agenda is to promote resolutions. The conference this year is being held November 6 through 9 at the Resort and Conference Center in Hyannis. So a delegate assembly would take a look at these resolutions you have before you, and we would, we would have them consider our thoughts. In the past, I know that Mr. Cole has attended quite regularly, and so has Mr. Menon. This year, we had someone that was gonna go and is unable to go. So, Mr. Menon, you're right. If we don't have a representative, perhaps we don't need to spend the committee's time. I think it is, however, I asked all of you to at least read these resolutions. So we'll be up to date on what's occurring this year. You were also given a copy of last year's resolutions and what happened to each of those. So is there anyone that would be able to attend this conference?
Not that weekend.
All right. Then I'm, I guess I'm going to...
Can I suggest?
Sure.
Can I suggest that we move to approve and whereby confirm, I have this written down, continued advocacy of the resolutions approved by the delegate assembly of 2012 as a block?
Second. Discussion? Because you've all read them, right? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Send that to her. Unless there's anything further, could I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
No, it isn't. The MCAS was...
Should've been sixty.
I don't put the timing. The Manning does. You need to change it. There's no way. I looked at that, I said, yeah, leave it.
I hate that.
She does. Don't do it anymore. And then the other thing I wanna...
Good night.
Thanks, Donna.
And the other thing I wanted to start next time we meet is to put...
I am about sixty.
Wasn't so much in the spoken part.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks for taking my picture.